The Adelanto Elementary School District Regular Board Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Ms. LeVey, can you call it to order, please? Can you do a roll call form establishment, please?
Madam President, the time is five thirty. I'll take roll call. Trustee Benz.
President.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, President.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, President.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, President.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, President. Form has been established. Moving on to section one point zero four, Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and place your right hand over your heart? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on to section two, adoption of the agenda. Two point zero one. Ms. LeVey, do we have any proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business?
Madam President, we are going to pull item thirteen point oh nine. That is the renewal of briefing. And that one will be tabled to the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to section two point zero two. Adoption of the agenda with the removal of thirteen point zero nine. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Trustee Turner, motion to adopt the agenda minus thirteen point zero nine.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Ben, second. Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Madam President, may I clarify who said second?
Yes, please, I'm gonna, because I can't see, so it makes it a little difficult. And I'm also, I couldn't hear. So, okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
No worries. Trustee Webster will second that. And I'll take the vote. Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass five zero. Moving on to section three. Close session declaration. We will be taking items three point zero two through three point zero six into closed session. Moving on to section four, public testimony before closed session. I will read the public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on items must complete the and submit A E S D speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although the board of trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the board of trustees listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentations depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Okay, moving on to four point oh two. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers for A D T A?
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to welcome Ms. Jennifer Raider to speak this evening. Mr. Sinatra, do you see her on Zoom?
Welcome, she's there.
Yes, I found her. I'm gonna unmute her now.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Ms. Sinatra. Good evening, board members, public administration and our cabinet superintendent Kraus. Appreciate you all being here tonight. Today marks the fourth day of summer school and we are in full swing. I haven't heard of any major upheavals, seems to be running along smoothly at all campuses. I appreciate the efforts of Dr. Dwyzen and Carol Coburn along with all the principals and teachers and support staff for the efforts to see that every child is having a great summer camp experience, at the same time getting some review and preparation for the next grade level. The curriculum that was chosen is very good and has numerous components that really meet the needs that we have. Even though sixteen days doesn't seem like much, we are packing the time in with fun and activities. So far, I am thrilled with what I am personally seeing in the art, music, and P E enrichment classes. I enjoyed seeing some of the board members at our first day of summer school, but unfortunately, those few moments were kind of chaotic. We would love to have you visit now that things have settled into a routine. I am grateful for the partnership with academic services to send some of our teachers to CTA Summer Institute Conference at UCLA. They will experience a terrific instructional and professional development strand that will benefit us as a district. A D T A is sending a team as well, and we are looking forward to some terrific collaboration across the board. Thanks to Dr. Dwyzen for that. I was looking over the consent agenda items and I see that the fiscal impact for Millionaire Mind Kids is two hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Only a hundred and ten students can be a part of that program unless I'm reading it wrong. And for that amount of money, I really think our A E S D stakeholders ought to be apprised of the progress made last year. I hope that they did research fully to carry that kind of price tag for only a hundred and ten students. The transitional kindergarten aid job, I'm sorry, the transitional classroom aid job description is up for board approval tonight. Please read it over carefully as there are two items on the job descriptions that current transitional kindergarten and kindergarten teachers have an issue with. One on bullet point number thirteen is assisting children with toileting. We don't think aides should be assisting students with toileting since it opens the door for allegations that neither the aides nor the district needs. Moderate to severe does toileting, but they require two adults to be present. We feel that this should be removed. The other one is may assist other instructional office clerical staff as needed. This is a classroom aide, not an office aide, and we've learned by history that the aides will be pulled out of the classroom to do office help. And that's not appropriate. During the twenty twenty twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, TK aides were already pulled out of the classroom to assist in the front office. We urge you to please vote no on the TK job description and remove those two bullet points. We thank you for that consideration. I also see on the consent agenda a renewal for reliable nursing. As we have grown in our district, we have doubled our district nurses from one to two. This is still woefully insufficient for the needs of our district. We have fourteen schools and hundreds of students that need special healthcare, special I E P, special five oh four vision and hearing screening. The amount of work involved in all the things I just mentioned is staggering for our own two nurses. I hope our contract with Reliable Nursing will afford every campus a regular L V N. And now, I'm going to revisit my objection to thirty-three percent increase in your conference budget. It is not just five thousand dollars more, it's a total of seventy-five thousand dollars. That could pay for a new teacher, that could pay for two pares, that could pay for recarpeting of a school that is twenty-five years old with some rooms that have never been recarpeted. I was assured that the fifteen thousand dollars per person would never be exhausted, that the approval was just to be sure there was enough, just in case. But if that is true, ten thousand per person is enough. Anything that comes up that requires more than that could be approved at that time. Every cap gets reached. We have learned that with our class sizes, we have seen that with our spending caps. Every cap gets reached. One of our administrators recently needed a four hundred dollar flight approval to leave a conference due to a family emergency, and that was not approved. That seems petty in light of this huge just in case amount. I was very pleased to hear that Mr. Moran intends to plan staffing next year based on thirty to one in fourth and fifth grades. That is a noble endeavor and something that is easier said than done because our teacher shortage persists and is likely that our classes will have to be packed again to cap and our, I'm sorry, is likely that our classes will have to be packed to the cap again this year. You will hear me asking for lower class sizes again, again, this year at every opportunity. I leave you with a thought. Every cap is reached. Is it fiscally responsible, is it even respectful in our district for our school board to have voted themselves a thirty-three percent increase in travel and conference funding? And who is the watchdog over such conferences? How does our district benefit? Is there anything you can point to that shows this creates a better and stronger educational program for our children? Personally, I love conferences. I'm a lifelong learner and I enjoy putting in time to learn something new or to hone my craft. But unless that learning comes to actual fruition in my classroom, it's just me having fun at a conference. I would ask you all to consider, is this just you having fun at a conference? How is what you are learning going to affect, going to benefit our students? Perhaps just me asking that question will help you to frame what you are learning and bring it home in a way that truly honors the financial resources we are dedicating to you in your conferences. I know that the approval is a fait accompli, it's already been happened, it's already been done. You are now at fifteen thousand dollars per person. But hopefully, just me even asking, and I do ask this respectfully, for you to frame that in such a way so that every time you spend that money, that is a huge dedication of resources, that you would really be bringing it home to our district and benefiting students with what is going on at those conferences. As for me personally, I, I don't, I don't see it, I don't know it yet, but if you can share that with us, that would really help a lot. Please bear in mind that you are our elected school board trustees and you have a duty to our schools. It is no small undertaking and is a huge responsibility. I have to trust that you will remember your oaths. Thank you for your time tonight and for listening. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus, do we have a representative from C S E A?
Mr. Sinatra, do you see Ms. Lynn or anyone raising their hand to represent C S E A this evening?
I do not see Ms. Lynn nor anybody raising their hand from C S E A at the moment.
Madam President, at this time, we do not.
Do we have any audience members on Zoom or in person?
Not for closed session, no ma'am, no madam president.
Okay. Thank you. Well, let's move on to section five recess to closed session. The time is five forty-four. Can I get a motion?
Benz, I, I mo, motion.
Thank you, Ben.
So do I.
Thank you, trustee Soto. Ms. LeVey, could you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, motion pass five zero. We're now into closed session, thank you.
Alrighty, good evening, everyone. We are reconvening to open session. The time is now. Anybody?
Eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-five. P M, may I get a roll call?
Trustee Benz.
Here.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, here.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
And I'll take note that trustee LaFrench left after closed session at eight forty-nine P M.
Thank you very much. Closed session report seven oh one. There's no reportable actions taken during closed session. Going on to public testimony, Mr. Kraus, do we have any public speakers for the public comment period?
Mr. Sinatra, is anyone raising their hand in Zoom for A D T A?
I do not see anybody on Zoom raising their hand for A D T A.
You see anyone on Zoom, Mr. Sinatra, for C S E A?
I do not see anybody on Zoom for C S E A either.
Thank you. We do have a member in the audience with us as you would like to call Mr. Bobby Brown to the podium, please.
Good evening, superintendents, trustees. I'm Bobby Brown and I'm here on behalf of Dino and his group who ride the hot school buses during the summer. Dino could not verbally express himself, but he had long been kept in a room. One day, he got off the bus quietly, seemed frustrated, and mom noticed he had sweat under his nose. His mom asked him, "Son, is there something wrong?" Dino's fashion, he immediately raised his finger and started pointing and grumbling loudly and big tears ran down his face. You see Dino's in the background right there. His friend and his friends, with all the little investigating, we found out his friends were able not, able to talk or whining and complaining it was hot in there. It's hot. Meanwhile, what about his friends, what came, they couldn't speak? We can even go there because we'd have no idea. And obviously, through Dino has one operating vent on the back of the bus. He hears his friends pain. School buses with unoperable A Cs in Adelanto Elementary School District should not be a topic of discussion. High heat temperatures are expected here in the desert. Therefore, operable A Cs on school buses should be expected to and should be operable. Has been an annual back and forth with us and transportation. And reports have been made and we understand that work orders and estimates are sitting somewhere waiting for action. There have been times where I have seen my son get off the bus, hot and irritable to the point that he has no, the tears are rolling down his cheek. Before he got it written up at his I E P, an I E P, he had it put in there that he has to have an air-conditioned bus because we went back and forth with the school district. These buses are nothing but metal. I'm a Navy vet. I know what it's been, know what it's like to be in the hot, to, I'm not, I need my son and other disabled children to have this air conditioning. Get our kids our buses fixed, please. Quit making excuses, we don't have a mechanic or we have to send them down the hill. Get it fixed. Well, if that's what we need, then do it before the school year starts. We're not asking for much. Let's pretend these buses were yours, your cars. Would you drive them around without no A C? Probably not. I'll come to the district office when I need to make a complaint. And it's for him, not for me. I want our disabled kids taken care of. Please make sure our buses are fixed before the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moran. Mr. Kraus, do we have any additional speakers?
At this time, we do not. Thank you very much.
Very nice. Going on to nine point zero one, events and future activities significant to the district. Mr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, members of the community with us this evening and members out there in Zoom land. We have a few quick comments before I turn it over to my assistant superintendents in the district. So, we're excited to say that summer school, as you may have heard earlier when Ms. Raider came on from A D T A, that we had a great start to our summer school session. We're excited, we had an opportunity to visit the summer school sites. And yes, we will be out there as well before the end of the month to revisit the summer school sites and classrooms as well. We're very excited to see the children there and actually learning a lot of great hands-on activities as well as the academic activities. And so, a great opportunity to showcase what we do in the summertime. Just so the community is aware, again, I want to brag on Melva Davis Academy of Excellence, their administrative team, their classified team, and their certificated team over there. Next week, several of us have the pleasure of going to Washington, D.C. to receive a national award on the Schools to Watch. Melva Davis Academy of Excellence has won the State Schools to Watch recognition as well as the National Recognition. So, next week, several of us will be going to Washington, D.C. to honorably accept that award. And kudos to the Melva Davis team out there. We really appreciate all the hard work that they do as well as the hard work at all of our schools in our district. Tomorrow is Flag Day, June fourteenth, so it's a time, even though we're out for the summer, it's a time to remember about our flag and the history, and it's a great opportunity to teach a history lesson on our flag and Flag Day. So, we're excited about any opportunity we have to engage in those conversations. We also have next Monday, our district will be closed because we will be celebrating Juneteenth this year. So, we're excited that we're able to recognize that in the state of California. And it's not only just a day off, but it's also to recognize the accomplishments that have happened in the past. And so, we're excited to also teach that in our history lessons and let our students know why they are off on Monday of those that are here with us during the summer school session. And then, the governor, who is working with the legislature to sign a budget, hopefully by June fifteenth or between June fifteenth and July first, we will know a little bit more about what's going on with the state budget this evening. Mr. Clemmish and I will be presenting on our budget, proposed budget. And then finally, Mr. Brown, we do appreciate your comments related to our buses. And before you were done speaking, I sent an email to our transportation department to ask them exactly how many buses do not have A C and why they don't have A C. And so, I have your email, I'll definitely be following up with you to make sure that we're making sure all of our buses have adequate A C. You are correct that this is a goal of ours that we've had for several years. And we did replace most of our A Cs last year, so I will be interested to find out why some of our buses may not have that. But I can assure you that it will be remedied as soon as we find out the why. And if I have to step in and expedite that, I definitely will. So, again, thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. Fourteen oh eight and fourteen ten, see that helped me right there. Stay that because I can go tomorrow and figure that one out. But I'm going to get a list of all of our buses again, and I do appreciate you letting us know those bus numbers. It's up to the president of the board.
One minute. We have five routes during summer school, three routes are done by Ed Meyer. These buses don't have A C in them either. Just to let you guys know. And no seat belts, why are we paying for these buses? We can get our own buses fixed. You know what I mean? Because I see Ed Meyer running around all over, picking up our kids. Let's get our buses fixed and then we don't have to have Ed Meyer no more. We can keep our money in our own area and pay for our own stuff.
I appreciate those comments. One of the things that we've had is a shortage of transportation drivers. And so, we actually increased our bus driver pay, hourly pay, to over twenty-seven dollars an hour. And I believe that we're going to be almost fully staffed, if not fully staffed, by the time school starts to not have to rely on outside vendors as well. So, I appreciate your comments. And also, thank you for your service, sir. I'm an Army vet, and so I heard you say you were Navy vet. And do appreciate your services as well to our country, so, and thank you for your comments. And with that, I will now turn it on down to Mr. Moran down for update on human resources.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Good evening, trustees, Superintendent Kraus, cabinet staff, students, and committee members. Have some brief comments from H R. So, on the certificated side, I'd like to thank our H R team, principals and assistant principals, as was coordinators and directors who've come together to hold certificated teacher interviews over the past several months. I'd like to thank each of them for their hard work and dedicating time away from their school sites and supporting this important need. We're continuing to hire and fill our vacant positions. On the classified side, on Saturday, May twentieth, Saturday, May twenty-seventh, and last Tuesday, June sixth, the H R department held a joint workshops and a community resource fair at Mason Linda Middle School. Approximately, over those three days, approximately two hundred people attended these workshops and job fair. This work has resulted in over fifty-five classified interviews being scheduled for this week. Now, there was a lot of people here today and over the next few days. So, our goal is to hire for open positions as well as substitute positions. A huge thank you to our H R team, Gloria, Kim, Alejandra, Dana, and Idreri, as well as the many classified staff who attended on those two Saturdays and that Tuesday to help our team get the job done. So, it was a great team effort. Finally, I'd also like to thank the classified and certificated staff who are currently working in our summer school and E S Y programs. Your dedication and commitment to our students is so important. Thank you for your support. And lastly, I'd like to wish all the fathers and grandfathers, as well as those who serve in a fatherly role, a fantastic Father's Day this Sunday, June eighteenth. Being a father of two children, I understand how important a father's role is in raising children to make good decisions. Trust others, trust in, in your belief of being kind to others and showing support and love to others. So, again, Happy Father's Day to those fathers this Sunday. And this concludes our H R update. Thank you.
Dr. Dwyzen, academic services.
All right, good evening, board of trustees, A E S D staff and community. I'm pleased to share some highlights from our academic services division. So, I first want to give a huge thank you to our teachers, staff, everyone behind the scenes who's involved in summer school. We've had a great start to the program. And also, we do have an additional program, a grant-funded program at George, which is taking place. So, we're excited, the students are having a great time over there led by the wonderful team over at George. So, we've had over seven hundred students attending all of our summer school and E S Y programs so far. And we are just, we're, we're having a good time. So, thank you to everyone involved. Tonight, we have on the agenda our L cap hearing. Our formal presentation will take place at the next board meeting. But I do want to take some time to really just stress the time that we've been putting together all year long to make sure that we have continuous opportunities for parent and community engagement through our L cap meetings, and we hear you. So, just a little sneak peek, the most significant feedback we're receiving is in terms of interventions, both academic and behavioral, because there's two sides to that. So, in the L cap, we're excited that I, I, items such as counselors, behavior, intervention support personnel, social workers, mental health support, and then on the academic side, things like adding pares to classrooms. Those are very much needed, and so we're excited to share those updates with you at our annual update next week. I'm sorry, next board meeting. I also want to thank our academic services and our fiscal team. They've been working hard on our annual audit and getting things together. And so there's a lot of work that goes into that. And so we just want to thank our partners and fiscal services for their support in helping us to get through that. And then at this time, we're just really working on getting this school year started. And I want to thank all of our academic services team, division members for their hard work. Right now, we're getting, we're gearing up for our management two-day meeting coming up in July and also our welcome back day for all of our staff on August second. So we're excited about that. And then in closing, just a very happy Father's Day to all the fathers in the audience and online and happy Juneteenth. So that is the end for academic services.
Thank you, Dr. Dweezin. We always appreciate the opportunity of staff to be able to present what's going on in their departments to the community. And thank you, Mr. Rand and Dr. Dweezin for those updates.
Okay. Prior to moving on to ten point oh one. First off, trustees, could I get a motion to extend?
Uh, Ben, I'm motion to extend to up to eleven, eleven o'clock. Hopefully, we, we don't need, need to, but we've got a lot on the agenda.
So do I. Second motion.
Madam Levine, may I get a vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Okay. It also just came to my attention that there was a outstanding golden rod. Mr. Cross, did we want to allow them to make their comment?
If it pleases the board, there is Ms. Rivera, who's a TK teacher at Eagle Ranch, did have a comment. For whatever reason, it did not show up on our spreadsheet. She is online and in Zoom. And if it, if it's okay with the board to allow her three minutes.
Board, are we in agreement? Sure. All right, go ahead and proceed, Mr. Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Sinatra. Would you mind asking Ms. Rivera to unmute and give her the floor?
Asking them to unmute now and adding them to the Zoom.
Good evening. Can I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, board members. Um, it's me again, Maria Rivera from Eagle Ranch, and I um, more than anybody else, I really want that TK job description to be approved tonight. And that way we can move forward and, and just hire our, our aides that will be there for the kids. But I just have this gut feeling that I really need to speak up on, on that toileting issue that Ms. Generator mentioned earlier. I just never want to be in a position where I have to, you know, testify with just allegations of of any kind, for that matter. And I just don't feel comfortable for my aide to individually assist in toileting of these children, especially by herself. So I really worry about that. You know, if it was your child, would you want a paraprofessional changing your child in the private restroom? Because obviously it can't be done in front of the other children, or if it was your grandchild. And so I really worry about that. You know, at the, at the moment, what we normally do, because accidents do happen, we send them to the nurse's office and the nurse and the, the LVN, they're there together. And most often times, the parent comes, changes the child. Sometimes they take a pull, give them a shower, because sometimes they do have bowel movement and they have to go home. So I don't see that that's okay for my paraprofessional to do. And I'm just looking out for paraprofessional for myself, for, you know, our principals to never be in a position where there's allegations involved. I just don't want that for our district or for anybody, for that matter. And the other point, which was point number seventeen, was that our, our, our paraprofessionals will be helping in the office with clerical, you know, whenever there's, there's a, you know, the attendance clerk missing. And it did happen this school year. And the teacher was told that, you know, it's a sub pair aide, so she could be pulled out to the office as needed. And then on another note, I, I wanted to look it up, but I was really busy this evening. I know that the California Department of Education doesn't require children to be potty trained. And I wanted to ask Mrs. Love French if state preschool requires children to be potty trained. So thank you for your time and I appreciate your, the opportunity to speak. In regards to the TK curriculum, curriculum, I want to say thank you to Carol Colburn, who's been working with us and scheduling curriculum meetings for us. So we're moving forward. And thank you. Thank you for the time for letting me speak.
Thank you. Alrighty, proceeding on to staff reports and presentations, ten point zero one, business services. Mr. Cross.
Yes, thank you. We'd like to call up Mr. Jesse Landry with, he's with CFS and he's going to be talking about our CFD number four. There are some items on the agenda later on that this item that he's presenting on will attune to. So, Mr. Landry, we look forward to your brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. And good evening, members of the board, district staff and members of the public. My name is Jesse Landry, Vice President with CFS. And I'm here to, tonight to talk a little bit about CFD number four and some items that are going to be coming forward on the board later on the agenda items, specifically item fifteen point zero three and fifteen point zero four. So currently, the district has four CFDs that have seven distinct taxing areas. So I've listed these here. You can kind of see, Matt, this is just a broad overview. To date, two of those CFDs have bonds issued, improvement area, CFD one, improvement area A and CFD number two. Today, I'm going to be talking specifically about CFD number four and, and some, some items that are going to be coming forward. So this CFD was formed back in two thousand and six. It was intended for two hundred and seventy-six residential units. Great recession happened. The property lay dormant for a number of years. DR Horton purchased that property and they wanted to begin a development. So in two thousand and twenty-one, they approached the district and asked for some modifications to this old two thousand and six CFD to set this up and have the right parameters for their new project that they'd be building. And during that process, the board approved a number of these changes. This was early two thousand and twenty-two, when the board took action to approve some of these things. So some, some folks may remember these actions. We amended the RMA. We changed the facilities because the old water district had, was defunct and it was now the Victorville Water District is what it's called now. So there were some changes that they made to the agencies that could be funded. And then they also modified the, the overall bonded indebtedness. So we took all these actions back in two thousand and twenty-two, the board did. One of those things, the actions that we took was modifying what other publication agencies could receive funding from the CFD. So it's the city of Victorville and the Victorville Water District. So we approved those. And then those items, those agreements went before their boards or their councils and the city and then the water district both approved these JCFAs. That's a Joint Community Facilities Agreement. So this is kind of the conclusion of that modification process. They've approved it. And now before you on fifteen point zero three today, you'll see the approval where we're approving the same form. The Adelanto School District Board approves this and then now, now that modification is finalized. So I'll, I'll pause there. Any questions about the JCFA approval item? Hearing none. The reason why we did these modifications is so that DR Horton could be able to build the project. They, the project wasn't viable without these changes. So now that we've made these changes, DR Horton has made some progress as they've been developing this project. To date, they've, they've closed about fifty percent of the homes and they have building permits issued. These were numbers from a couple of months ago. So they've made even further progress to this date. They've reached out to the district and put a formal request to issue a, a series of special tax bonds for CFD number four to fund school district facilities, city facilities and water district facilities. There's a tax A in CFD number four and a tax B, the tax As for the school district, and then the tax B is for those other non-school district facilities. They've asked that we move forward with issuing both sets of bonds over, over the CFD. And then those bonds are then repaid by the taxes collected within CFD number four. The issuance of bonds doesn't change the taxes that are levied in the community. It just, it's the step in the process that allows these agencies to receive funding. One of those agencies is the school district. So we would, right now, it'd estimate to receive about four point three million dollars in funding for school facilities. So here, I've just provided an estimated bond sizing. These are based on current market interest rates. These things can change over time. So I don't want to be too committed to this, as we'll talk about. This is a several month process for the bond issuance. And I want to clarify that on fifth, this is related to item fifteen point zero four. The district isn't approving the issuance of bonds. They're approving us to get started on the process, to engage the team, to begin taking the actions that are necessary. The team will work over the next three to four months. And this team includes a disclosure council, a bond council, an appraiser and underwriter will work through, get all the documentation in order. Then we would come back before the board, before the bonds are issued and then receive, ask for approval on all of the documentation that we prepared. As far as some of the eligible projects, the CFD number four is within the boundaries of Columbia Middle School and West Creek. So I know the district just completed their master plan recently, that facility's master plan. So in talking with some of the members of staff on the facility side and the maintenance department, we've identified a few eligible projects. This doesn't, this isn't necessarily the final project list, but this is just to say that of that four point three million dollars, there are a number of eligible projects that are identified that could potentially be funded through this, these bond proceeds. And then here's kind of this timeline that I talked about. It's, it's a bit of a lengthy process because we need to run an appraiser appraisal over the property to come up with a value. And then we'll need to, the councils will need to prepare bond documentation, including a preliminary official statement, issuance resolutions, fiscal agent agreements, a lot of, a lot of boring bond documents that need to be prepared along the process. And then we would be planning on coming back to the board. You'll see there mid-August, early September with that package of documents, a little bit better understanding of where we're at on the, the structure and the sizing of the bonds. And then we would be asking the board, presenting again, and then asking the board for approval to move forward with the final steps, which are actually posting the POS, pricing the bonds and then closing the transaction. And that's all I had for tonight. Any, any questions from the, from the board?
Yeah, real quick, you mentioned on, it looks like page nine, that this is eligible for Columbia and West Creek, but reviewing the map, the the CFD four is, is over there. Could you shed a little bit more light how that applies to a school across?
Is it Columbia that you're, you're looking at?
Yeah.
Columbia specifically, the middle school boundaries. And, and I reviewed maps that were on the district's website for the, the boundaries of Columbia Middle School. And so those middle school boundaries are larger than the elementary school boundaries. They may, because they're, they're typically smaller grade levels and sometimes larger capacity than in elementary school. So they'll cover larger areas. So I think for your middle school boundaries, they're quite large, especially in comparison to the elementary school boundaries.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
I have a question. So Dale Horton purchased, this bond is for the Columbia area. They haven't started building homes there yet.
Oh, they, they have, they have actually, Board Member Turner. So they've, they've built about, I think, probably close to sixty percent of the homes have been permitted now. And they've already sold probably close to fifty percent of those homes to individual homeowners. So they've made significant progress in being, in developing that project. Usually in, this varies by where things are at in the current bond market. But currently, right now, you'll see some of these bonds being issued at levels of maybe thirty, forty percent individual homeownership. And so we're in a case where we're closer to fifty percent. So that, that was enough for me to say, okay, we're across this, we're across this threshold. This will be well received by investors. The size of the bonds are going to be large enough to be able to get a low interest rate on the transaction.
Okay, now I, I guess I'm lost. I I was under the impression that, that the number four was in the Gus Franklin, Melva Davis, West Creek area. Am I wrong in that?
No, it, it is in West, West Creek Elementary. So it is within the boundaries of West Creek. But then the middle school area, from the maps that I reviewed online showed that those, that was within Columbia Middle School.
Okay.
And so if, if we, these are, you know, based on what we're doing here today, we're not setting up the facility. So if, if we identify that there's other projects or other things, we can have those discussions with staff and determine, is there other way? The, the main thing that we want to do is make sure that since these are assessments that are levied in the community, that wherever those community members go to, wherever they have students, where they would attend in the district, that we put the, the proceeds towards uses at those facilities. We want to benefit the residents of the community. That's the first priority with the funding.
I got it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, I got one really quick. So, you know, on, on the news, there's a lot of uncertain certainty with bonds, with, with the economy. So is there a, how does that affect this?
Great question. Great question. So we've seen interest rates in our market, in the municipal market increase quite a bit over the last couple of months as the Fed, if you hear about the Fed increasing interest rates, right? And so their next meeting is coming up in a couple of days where they're not expected to make another increase, but they, they are, there is talk that there will be another increase this year. It has affected our market and it increased interest rates. But overall municipal bonds are ones that investors still kind of flock to in times of uncertainty. So while, while the Fed may have another increase in rates, it's already been baked into our interest rates. So the numbers that you see here kind of bake those in. My expectation is by the end of the year that we may see, you may see reductions in municipals. What's, what's unique about municipal, the municipal bond market is that we kind of run the opposite way that the economy does a lot of times. So if there's uncertainty around the stock market and say there's a recession, investors will tend to flock towards municipal bonds because they'll be able to have a safer investment. They won't, we're not going to lose money. They'll have a guaranteed rate of return through a bond. So a lot of times when the stock market's in trouble, the bond market for municipal bonds is in a better place. It's, we've had increases lately as the stock market has gone up. There's been volatility. It's been up and down. So those things have affected our market. But my expectation is that with these bonds and then based on our timing in late fall, that we would be in a good position. Obviously, this is something that we, we weigh out as with, when's the right time to price? We'll be looking at what's going on with the Fed, what's going on with other bonds that are coming into the market at the same time. And we try to strategize the timing of when we issue the bonds to, to get the lowest rate for the districts.
Okay. Also, another quick question. So if, if the, the interest rates, let's say in two years, they go down like, like when some, someone refine, find, finance their house for a low, lower in, interest rate, could we do the same thing? Would, would we do the same thing?
Absolutely. Yeah. Now with municipal bonds, well, these bonds will be what we call non-rated bonds. There will be a, there'll be a somewhat of a lockout during a certain number of years, because the bond investor doesn't want to spend the time of buying this bond and then knowing they could get called tomorrow and get that prepaid or refinanced tomorrow. So we'll have a small lockout because they're non-rated, well, even a smaller lockout. Most rated bonds would have a ten-year lockout period. I think on this, we'd be pushing for something about half as much as that. So we would have that opportunity as these are thirty-year bonds. So we'll have multiple opportunities to potentially come back and refinance the bonds, lower down the interest rate and achieve debt servicing.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
I too had a question. You mentioned a little bit about some of the improvements that these schools will have. Are these improvements set in stone or can they be?
No. At the time of bond issuance, what we need to have is a reasonable expectation that we'll spend the proceeds within three to five years. That's, that's the requirement by the IRS for us to issue tax exempt bonds. We need to have a reasonable expectation. And so by us identifying, looking through the master plan, talking with facility staff, we say, okay, we, we've got enough projects here to have a reasonable expectation. Even at the time when we issue the bonds, we don't have to lock in the exact projects. But at the time when we spend the money, when we decide we're going to spend the money, they do need to be unauthorized facilities of the CFD. So those are useful life of five years or more and provide some type of benefit to the residents that were, are within those CFD boundaries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, trustees, any more questions? Hearing none. Moving on to ten point oh two, business services presentation on the proposal. Mr. Cross.
Yes, Madam Clerk, members of the board, I'd like to call staff up to present on the proposed budget for this next fiscal year. Yes, Madam Clerk, members of the board, I'd like to call staff up to present on the proposed budget for this next fiscal year. Good evening. This evening, uh, staff will be presenting on the proposed budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year with me this evening. Come on into the camera. I don't know if you can see him, Mr. Zach Clemish. He's our Director of Fiscal Services. So we, uh, want to welcome him. He's, uh, been doing a great job behind the scenes with his team, the Budget Office, working with the county and, uh, many other, uh, entities about preparing this budget. And so this evening, this is part of our budget cycle. We always present in the first meeting in June, the proposed budget. However, the governor has not signed the state budget yet. And we're not sure if it'll happen between now and July first. But we fully anticipate changes happening in the state budget, uh, between now and October, when the, uh, a full bevy of taxes will come in. And so we anticipate potentially forty-five day revise after July first to the board, which would be in Ju- July fifteenth or fourteenth, whenever our board meeting is in July. And then again, at first interim in December, we would definitely bring changes back based on what the governor and legislature finally agreed to and has signed into law. But this evening, this is based on the information that we have. And so as you can see here, we will get started. Hey, thank you on the clicker, Mr. Sinatra and Jalen over there, our IT team. Great job on that. So gonna turn over Mr. Clemish for a couple of slides here, Mr. Clemish.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, tonight, we're just going to go over a glimpse of the proposed budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, four, um, budget. First, we will cover some of the assumptions and enrollment and ADA numbers, followed by year-by-year proposed budget for the next three years, ending with a summary of next steps. With this budget, we are able to meet our obligations for next year and the two following years, which earns us a positive certification. All of the revenues and expenditures have been updated with assumptions provided from the San Bernardino County Office of Ed and School Services of California. For all three years, the district is able to meet the state's required three percent reserve. On June fifteenth, which is later this week, the governor will sign the final budget. In the days following that, we will make any necessary adjustments and a revised budget will be brought back to board.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Clemish. Appreciate that. And by the way, Mr. Lanza, great job on the CFD presentation. He was talking, uh, Greek to probably a lot of people. But to me, I have an undergrad in finance, and it was just music to my ears, talking about those bonds and the interest rates and inverse relationships, which is a bunch of nerd stuff that we finance people talk about. But, all right, speaking of numbers, here we go. So as you can see here, for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, the state has proposed an eight point two-two percent COLA, three point nine four in twenty-four, twenty-five, and three point two-nine in twenty-five, twenty-six. I want to make it clear, and Mr. Clemish will also, uh, validate this, that when we decided to negotiate raises, uh, we did calculate the eight percent, the three and the three in there, uh, as we move forward. And so that is already calculated into our expenditures as we move forward, uh, in the multi-year projec- of projections. And so that is not an additional amount that we didn't know that we had coming. This is what we had predicted and budgeted in our current budget. And there you have a little asterisk that says that as well. And then again, you have your STIRS retirement system contribution from the district, nineteen point one percent across the board there. PERS, you see there, they're going up slightly, twenty-seven and twenty-eight and twenty-eight point eight. We have a lottery that we receive in, and then our enrollment. And until we know what our enrollment is, we usually generally budget it at a certain, uh, amount, as you can see here, seventy-seven, forty-one. Now, we will adjust that as we go. That's why we have, uh, un-audited actuals coming for the board in September. We have first interim coming for the board in September, I mean, in December. So when, when school starts August seventh, we will have, uh, enrollment numbers, because we capture that enrollment the first ten days of school. And then we are making adjustments to the budget and bring that before the board. Now, what we have is our average daily attendance. You see that bottom number right there. What that is, is the difference between how many students we have enrolled versus how many show up over the hundred and eighty days of school. And that gives us a percentage of ADA. And that's how we are funded on, is our ADA number, not our enrollment number. Although there is some legislation in the legislature being proposed that would fund school districts on their actual enrollment versus their average daily attendance. So we're monitoring that to see where that may go. As you can see here, here's our historic enrollment, eighty-eight percentages here. And then as we move forward, what we're predicting, and we have full faith and confidence in Dr. Dwyer's on her academic services team to assist us with our enrollment as it falls under academic services. And they're doing a great job working with our principals and our school sites and also our families. You know, one of the things that we've been really engaging in is our families and the importance of coming to school every day, uh, all day, and learning as much as their students can learn, uh, while they're here with us. And so, uh, we really stress the importance of that to our families. We'll continue that outreach as we move forward to increase our ADA. Now, here we go, the meat potatoes. We have our twenty-three, twenty-four revenues and expenditures. And as you can see here, one of the things I want to point out is that we do have a lot of state and federal money that is categorical. It's one-time money that we have factored in. You'll see in our multi-year projection where that comes in. So as we receive that excess money, we have to spend that excess money on one-time expenditures that they are allowed to be spent on. For instance, you might recall the SIR funds that we did. And we spent a lot of that on, on COVID, that, that C word that we, uh, dealt with for many years there. But now as we move forward, we are receiving grants that Dr. Dwyer's on, again, her academic services team are working on expending to the benefit of our staff and students and families. So here you see our revenues projected are a hundred and twenty-six point eight mil, uh, for the revenues, and that includes our state, local, federal, LCFF. And then our expenditures on the expenditure side there, you see a hundred and thirty-eight. And again, we are spending down a majority of that is, is federal categorical funding or state categorical funding. Twenty-four, twenty-five, the same thing that you see here, we are spending down our revenues that we get, or anticipated to get as far as categorical funding. Because one of the things you will see, when we talk about deficits, you'll see in a minute, you either have a structural deficit where you're continuously spending more than you're taking in, or you're spending down the one-time revenues that you get, because you have to spend them down. And so it looks like your deficit's spending. But at the end of the day, you are really just spending down your, uh, categorical funding. Here we see twenty-five, twenty-six as well, a hundred and twenty-seven million coming into revenues, and a hundred and thirty-four in expenditures, getting closer because we're spending down more of that categorical funding. So as we look forward in the multi-year projections, you can see here that on the, uh, total revenues going across the board there, and then our expenditures as we're going across, and then of course, the, the, uh, excess, which is a negative, because we are spending down majority of the categorical funding. And Zach, if you just want to talk about that for a second, how your team is managing the, uh, categorical funds with, uh, Dr. Ochoa's team?
Sure. We, uh, track all of the categorical, categorical dollars. We have spread, spreadsheets with expiration dates and, and all the likes for all the information. Uh, so we monitor that on a monthly basis and ensure that we're not overspending, uh, make sure we're not underspending. Um, yeah, it's all, all tracked.
Thank you, sir. And so then you can see here, our ending fund balance, and again, we'll, we'll have a slide that'll break this down, because a lot of that is in the restricted category. So we have our beginning fund balance or ending fund balance. And then as we go to the next slide, we have the components of the ending fund balance. This is the most important slide, because it really tells you, where is all that money going or where is it allocated to? So you can see here, for instance, take twenty-three, twenty-four, forty-two point one million. We have revolving cash. That's a mandatory item in there. That's in there. We have our stores. That's all the stuff in the warehouse that we have, about three hundred thousand in inventory. Now we have assignments, and this, these are things that we know are coming down the pipeline. So we received a grant for electric buses, but they're not free. We have to pay a certain percentage towards those electric buses. And so you can see there that we have that allocated till we spend that money. We anticipate spending that by twenty-four, twenty-five, hence why there's zero dollars to be spent in twenty-five, twenty-six. Same thing with the textbook adoption. We are working on that. The next textbook adoption with Dr. Dwyer's on and her team. We have a camera project. One of the things we've heard about is safety and security. And one of the things that Mr. Sinatra and his team have been working on, and we appreciate it, is getting bids together with our purchasing department, Lori McMillan and her team, and going out to bid for a district-wide camera system that is, is uniform across every school site. It will be able to be viewed by, uh, pretty much anybody that has access to it on the computers, on an iPad, on a cell phone, uh, twenty-four hour monitoring. So we're excited to be able to move forward with that. And so we have estimates that, uh, a little over a million dollars on that, that at some point will come before the board. So we're excited to be moving with that project. And then our education protection account that we have in there, uh, that we have to set aside for now. Um, Zach, did you want to just mention the EPA amount there, the four point nine?
We just have a little bit of reserves left in our EPA account. We're going to fully spend them down next year.
All right. And then you see the three percent reserve, as you heard Mr. Clemish say earlier, the mandated state, uh, three percent reserve there on that line, the four point one, four million, and then four million, uh, across. And then we have a restricted. And you can see that's the bulk of our ending fund balance. Look at the first year, restricted money. That is categorical money. Title one, title two, title three, SIR funds, uh, uh, ELOP grant funds, learning recovery funds. That's all lumped in there. It's restricted. It can only be sent on certain things. It's one-time monies. However, we are spending it down, as you can see, thirty million, then down to twenty-five, and down to nineteen. And it might even probably go faster than that. So our unassigned, which is what we have at the end of the day, uh, right now projected is about fifty-six thousand in twenty-three, twenty-four, sixty-one thousand in twenty-four, twenty-five, and a hundred and eight thousand in twenty-five, twenty-six. Now that again is subject to change based on actual expenditures. When we close the books and un-audited actuals in September, whatever falls out that we may not have spent this year will increase generally. Uh, there is a slight increase in the ending fund balance and unassigned when we close the books. And so in September, Mr. Clemish and his team will also be presenting on that with me as well on the un-audited actuals. So this again is subject to change. And then if the governor signs anything into law that increases our funding, that will also change our balances. So, Mr. Clemish, talk about our next steps.
All right. So next steps, at the next board meeting, we will bring this proposed budget back for adoption. If any changes are needed, we will bring the budget back for the forty-five day budget revision window. Fiscal Services has already started working on un-audited actuals, also called year-end closing. And we look forward to finishing everything up for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and bringing the completed report in September. The interim reports will be the next major milestones for budget work, and those will come to board in December for the first interim, then March for the second interim.
Great. And thank you, Mr. Clemish. And I want to give kudos to him and his team, uh, Carrie Ewing, Katie Ewing, sorry, Katie. I know she's out there listening because she's all excited that her name's on the slide. Um, I appreciate all the work that she does. And Sylvia Hayes, our two budget techs that work with Mr. Clemish on a daily basis in Fiscal Services. So I wanted to thank them and give them a shout out. And with that, uh, Mr. Clemish and I are more than happy to take any questions the board may have.
Board, do we have any questions? Turner?
I, I do have a question. Uh, when, when it comes to the, oh, oh, elect, like, electric bus, buses, does that include the charge, charging stations? Or do we already have those? Are we going to use the ones we already are supposed to have? Because we do have buses, electric buses.
Oh, yes, ma'am. We do have ten charging stations out there in anticipation of more electric buses. So we have two thousand one, two thousand two, two thousand three, uh, three electric buses. And we anticipate six more coming down the pipeline, uh, related to the grants that the, uh, the state has, uh, put out there as well as other, uh, grantees. And so we're excited that we have six on order right now. That should be coming, but it takes almost a year or more to get those buses in. Once they're in, we have the charging stations and the slots all ready for them, and we'll be able to charge them as soon as they get it. Well, they'll be charged, but we'll be able to keep them charged. And, uh, you know, if we ever look at, uh, adding on, we have the ability and capacity to add more charging stations as we move forward.
So, so the, the, um, the need, the charge, charging need can be, be met, like, how, how much they, they draw? Where we're going to be able to fulfill, fill that with more charge, charging station?
Yes, we have ten. So if we get six more buses, we'll have a total of nine electric and ten stations. And then as more grants become available for charging stations as well, uh, we are monitoring that. Lori McMillan in purchasing is always watching out for any other grants that we might be able to do. And a lot of times, there's a, there's a, uh, amount the district has to put towards it, but it's well worth it, because it's a small percentage of what it really costs to put those charging stations in. But absolutely, we have a huge bus yard out there, uh, with plenty of room to add as many stations as we potentially may need in the future.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Trustee Turner?
Based on the governor's, uh, budget, should we be concerned that there may be a major switch? And we have to come back and redo these figures? And is there a possibility that we may not have a positive budget for all three years?
So based on what, uh, Mr. Clemish and I, and talking to the county and many other, uh, people like School Service of California, we don't believe that the final budget will make cuts to, uh, education. Uh, we just may not receive major increases like we have seen in the last several years. And we have budgeted for that to keep it at a steady, uh, pace. We have not, uh, we're very conservative in our, in our fiscal services department. I can tell you that. And even if they say, oh, yes, you're going to get all this extra money, until we see it, we don't believe it. And so we don't want to go out there and allocate money that we don't, we just speculate on, and we've never been speculators. But I can tell you that, uh, we anticipate never not having a positive certification anytime soon, um, because we constantly manage our budget. As Mr. Clemish said, every month, we're looking at what is coming in, what is going out, making those adjustments. And, and at, at these budget cycles, first interim, well, un-audited actuals coming up next, first interim, second interim, we're making those adjustments. And at any time that we do perhaps see that there is something detrimental based on what the state is doing, uh, we will alert the board. We don't have to wait for a budget, um, cycle to alert the board to say, hey, we want to do a presentation, because here's what the governor's proposing is going to affect us X, Y, or Z.
Thank you.
Trustee Soto?
Uh, my question was answered. Thank you.
Perfect. I appreciate both of you gentlemen, and we, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, proceeding on to eleven, public hearing and sun- sunshine proposal, Mr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you. So as we go through the adoption cycles for the budget and for the LCAP, well, part of that required process is public hearings. And so this evening, before the board, we have the, uh, public hearing for the LCAP. And before you open up the public hearing, I just want to point out that attached to the, uh, agenda item eleven point one is the draft LCAP, which we can revise before June twenty-seventh, based on comments that may or may not be received. At that time, the board will have in June twenty-seventh, the ability to approve the final LCAP for next year. But this evening, the board will just open up the, um, public hearing and, uh, anticipate any questions. And if there are no questions, just close the public hearing.
Very nice. Okay, um, opening public hearing at nine forty-four? Do we have any discussion?
I have none, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Sinatra, do we have anyone on Zoom that has their hands up?
I do not see anybody raising their hand on Zoom.
Thank you.
All righty, close, closing this public hearing at nine forty-five? All righty, continuing on to eleven point oh two. Opening public hearing on the proposed fiscal year at nine forty-five PM. Do I have any discussion? Mr. Sinatra, do we have anybody online?
Nobody online raising their hand at the moment, no.
Mr. Kraus, do we have any audience speakers?
Not that I'm aware of, Madam Clerk.
Very well, closing this meeting at nine forty-six. Thank you. All righty, proceeding to twelve point oh one, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of May twenty-third, twenty-two, twenty-three?
Uh, trustee Turner, I motion to approve.
Ben, I sec- second. Madame Leve, please take the vote. Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster? Webster, I. Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben? Ben, I.
All righty, we are taking items thirteen point oh two through thirteen point four forty-four. Does any trustees want to pull an item?
Uh, Ben's, I would like, like to pull thirteen point three four.
Any other trustees have a item?
I have none.
I have none.
Perfect, perfect. All righty, moving on to, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding thirteen point three four?
Soto, I motion that we approve.
Ben's, I sec- sec- second.
All right, Madame Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, yes.
Trustee Webster? Webster, I. Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben? Ben, I.
All righty, items for- Alrighty, items removed from the consent agenda. I need a motion for thirteen point three-four.
Uh, Ben's, I, uh, mo, motion uh, to, uh, approve I, item thirteen, thirteen point three-three-four.
Trustee Turner, I second.
Alrighty, we are open for discussion.
I just want, want, wanted to pull this just to give, give it some e- extra, uh, attend, tension. So I, I am exci- so, so excited when we, uh, approve a new, new hi, hire from with, within the dis- district. And when you, you hear all good things, it really make, makes me proud, makes me proud. So that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Any other trustees have comment?
Uh, yes, I concur with, uh, trustee Ben's and Dr. DeWaison is really excited on this appointment, and so am I. Uh, longevity is key. It shows that we're on the right track, even though some may say that, have, some may say differently. I know that we are, and I know that you'll be a great asset to the academic services department. So I would say congratulations, but we haven't voted yet, but I already know what the vote will be, so.
I too want to, um, extend my gratitude for your, for your role and for hopefully this new role that you'll be coming into.
Lastly, I would say congratulations, but you are very part of A E S D's family. So I am so thrilled to see you coming over here with us. Congratulations on the job, if you get it. Um, and we are excited. Thank you so much. Ms. Leve, can I get a vote?
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Motion passes four zero. Congratulations. Um, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and saying a few words?
Good evening, trustees, board. I just wanted to thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm very, very excited. And I, um, just excited to continue service to our district that I love, and I have been here for a while. And so, um, thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. Moving on to fifteen new business, yes. Fifteen point oh-one, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the five percent increase to board members' base monthly stipend effective July first, two thousand twenty-three per ed code?
Ben's, I mo, mo, motion to, uh, approve.
Turner, I second.
Do we have discussion?
Madam Clerk, I just want to say, um, I heard the comments that were made this, uh, this, this afternoon, and, um, they're all taken and very much valid. So I just wanted to express that, um, those concerns are heard and very much valid. That's all I wanted to say.
Very nice. Any other trustees?
I have no comments.
Trustee Ben? Perfect. Ms. Leve, call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Motion passes four zero. Fifteen point oh-two, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the consideration of district committee to review the nine hundred board policies? We need two members. I do volunteer as one. Can I get a second?
My second, and I volunteer for that second.
Alrighty. Trustees, may I get a motion?
I motion that we approve.
Webster, I second. Ms. Leve, would you please call for the vote?
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Motion passes four zero. Moving on to fifteen oh-three, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the adoption and resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty for joint community facilities agreements relating to the facilities to be financed through community facilities, District number four of the Adelanto Elementary School District. May I get a motion?
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve.
Soto, I second that motion.
That was a mouthful. Madame Leve, may I get a vote?
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Motion passes four zero.
Trustees, may I get a motion for fifteen point oh-four?
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve.
Soto, I second.
You didn't have to tell me twice. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Ms., Madame Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. All right, proceeding fifteen oh-five. Uh, trustees, can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-two, authorizing temporary borrowing between funds of the district for, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four? Can I get a motion?
So do I motion that we approve.
Webster, I second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, Madame Leve, call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Proceeding fifteen point oh-six, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the adoption of resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-three for the annual education protection account? Uh, may I get a motion?
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve.
Soto, I second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, Madame Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Very nice. Motion passes four zero. Fifteen point oh-seven, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the M O U regarding retirement incentives?
Ben's, I mo, mo, motion to, uh, approve.
Soto, I second.
Trustees, do we have any discussion?
I just wish them well in their view, future endeavors.
Very nice. Uh, trustee Soto?
Uh, I concur.
Very nice. Madame Leve, uh, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Motion passes four zero. Okay, um, fifteen point oh-eight, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the M O U for concurrent certificated postings?
So do I motion that we approve.
Webster, I second. Trustees, do we have discussion? Hearing none, Madame Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Motion passes four zero. Fifteen point oh-nine. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the M O U for data pa- database programmer analyst remote work?
Ben's, I mo, mo, motion to, uh, approve.
Trustees, may I get a second?
Turner, I second.
We are now open for discussion.
I, I, I do have a question on this one. Um, so in order for the, this, the programmer put in his rec- resignation for retirement, but he will be working remotely instead?
Yes, trustee Turner, and, uh, the work that, uh, and I want to recognize, uh, Mr. Michael Barrett for the work that he's given to the district for many years. It's very technical and related to, uh, a lot of our areas, cow pads, the reporting that Dr. DeWaisen and her team do, a lot of the reporting that Zach and his team do fiscally as well as academically, and he has been instrumental. And until we're able to find somebody, because those are large shoes to fill, uh, he has agreed to assist us in this transition. And so, uh, we were able to work with him and negotiate, uh, this M O U uh, to bring before the board, because again, the work that he has done is absolutely instrumental. We wish him all the best in Wyoming with his grandkids, but appreciate his willingness to, uh, help us in this transition.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus, and thank you, Mr. Barrett, for stepping up and agreeing to help us out, even though you will be retiring. And congratulations on your number of years of service with us. We're going to be missed.
Trustees, do we have any more comment?
I have none.
Very nice. Madame Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, yes.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Motion passes four zero. Moving on to fifteen-ten, trustees, can I get a motion for the M O U for transitional kindergarten para job description? Webster, I move to table.
Soto, I second.
Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Uh, Ben's name.
Motion passes three-one. Okay, going on to policy introductions, updates, and readings. Sixteen point oh-one, trustees, can I get a motion to adopt and approve the second read of bor- board policy? Ninety-three, twenty, meeting and notices.
Trustee Turner?
You, you go, go ahead.
Uh, Turner, I motion to approve.
Ben's, I sec, second.
Very nice. Discussion? Hearing none? Nope.
I have none.
No, I have none.
Very nice. Madame Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Motion passes four zero. Moving on to sixteen point oh-two, trustees, can I get a motion to adopt and approve the second read of board policy? Ninety-two, fifty, remuneration, reimbursement, and other benefits to increase the allocated annual budget for each trustee?
Ben's, I mo, mo, motion to, uh, approve.
Turner, I second.
We are open for discussion?
Um, I, I know that this ish issue was, was spoke, spoken about, but you know, this board men, many year, years back did put a cap on, on, you know, they, they cre- created a, a bud- bud- budget for, for themselves where other dis- dis- districts there, there is none, so they get to go as much, you know? And, and I, I did agree with, with ma- miss Ray, 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 Raider, that if we do go, we need to kind of share what, what we've learned. I think we kind of, we go, I've enjoyed, I've learned, but I haven't shared what I've learned. And, and I'll take re- 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 responsibility for, for that. But when I do go to these con- conferences, I do go to be a bed, better board mem- member. I try to folk, focus the work workshops. I, I go, go to str- strictly on, on board, you know, ish, issues and classes and learn, learning what, what other dis- districts do. And I know that when I go, I will make, make a point to share and ho- hopefully we, we can apply. I mean, I, I do share with the su- superintendent, but it's more, I tell them what I went to, what, what I learned, but I think I'll do it in the few future as a more formal thing to, so that it's that I'm, I'm more transparent, parent.
I too wanted to concur with trustee Ben's, um, when I, when I went to my first conference, um, in Pismo Beach, um, I wanted to report out what I shared, what I learned. And, um, I feel that it's important that when we go to these conferences, we do report out what we learned, so that the public knows what we're doing out there and that the, the cost and the expenses are being used to improve the quality of education in this district as we improve as board members. Um, and so I just wanted to share that, yeah, definitely concur that I feel that we can be more transparent went by reporting out what we learned during these trips. That's all I wanted to say.
And I too concur with, um, what, uh, Ms. Raider had to say. You know, and I know fifteen thousand dollars seem like a lot of money, but you know, with the cost of everything, you know, that can get wiped up quite, quite quickly. Um, it's important for us to continue to educate ourselves here, so we can be knowledgeable of what is, what's going down the pipeline in education. We're not in the trenches like you are. And so it's important that we sit here and be able to understand the lingo and make decisions based on what our district need for our children. And that's the most important thing, our children. And I agree, sometime the agenda, you know, we get so caught up, like, like right now, we have to extend the meeting that, you know, we forego trustee comments. And so, um, we're going to make a point to inform the public of what the information that we get, learn, or relearn, and, and so we can bring it back to you. We do talk to the superintendent. Actually, what I like to do is record the conferences, especially the part that is very important. And I send it back to the, my, to the superintendent and share it with other board members. But I agree, it, we need transparency of what we're doing and how the money is being spent. And, um, so again, thank you for bringing that to our attention, um, and we'll do better.
Very nice. And I concur with my fellow trustees, um, our education is essential as well. I came on this board about a year and a half ago, knowing very little. And without the opportunities and the education that has been presented to me, I would not be as effective of a board member today. So I do believe that this is essential for us to get this education that we need. Um, and that is where I will hold my, my comments. Madame Leve, may I get a vote?
Trustee Soto?
Soto, yes.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I. Motion passes four zero. Sixteen point oh-three, trustees, can I get a motion to adopt and approve the second read of board policy? Thirty-three, fifty, travel expenses to increase meal expenses to a hundred and fifty per day, plus tip, not to exceed twenty percent.
Ben's, I mo, motion to, uh, approve.
Turner, I second.
We are now open for discussion?
Um, you know, trav- traveling to like San, San Francisco, my Miami, San Diego, things cost way more. Like, you know, in, in my, you know, sing, single mom, te- te- teacher brain, when, when I go in and eat, you know, we go and eat, I look and the fir- first thing I look, look as, is at the price. And it's like, holy cow, it's like, I, I sh- it's, it's expense, expensive in those big ci- 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 cities, so it's- es- esp- especially I like the the increase in the tip because they're really strict on on the tip, the count, count, county is. If you give too much of a tip, then you know, they make make you pay pay it back. So this, and this is part of the budget budget too. So it isn't like we we get the, you know, the fif- fifteen thousand, thousand and then some, this is in it, so. And that that's all I've got to say.
I agree with trustee Benz.
Very nice. All right, Madame Leve, may I get a vote?
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes four zero, sixteen point oh four. Trustees, can I get a motion to adopt and approve the second read of A R thirty-three, fifty?
Benz, I mo- motion to approve.
So do I second.
Very nice. We are open for discussion. Do we have any? Okay. Ms. Leve, may I please get a vote?
Trustee Soto.
Yes.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Alrighty, motion passes four zero, moving on to governing board members reports and announcements seventeen point oh one, trustee Turner.
Okay. First, I would like to say congratulations to all of the promos- promoters from fifth grade to middle school and from middle school to high school and our Hope program. I was able to attend several promotions last week and you know, looking at the kids as teen- as kinders, they grow so fast. You know, they grow so fast. And I just wish you all the luck in the world and thank you teachers and principals and parents and administrators for doing your best and moving them on. And I just wanna pray for you and wish you all the best. Especially our Hope program, you know, their speeches brought tears to my eyes. It's sad to see a child that lost hope in their life. And this program has given them hope. And I I thank Mrs. Fernandez and Ms. Forest for all you do and the love that you give these students because sometime they don't get it at home and in the program that they're in. And I commend you and I appreciate you. And I only wish that we can expand that program because more students need you, more than we would ever, you would ever know. And I just wanna say thank you for all that you do on a regular basis. To our teachers, thank you. I know that some of you are not out of school yet because you're in summer school. I just wish you a happy summer, get some rest, take a vacation, go out and take your shoes off and I would say walk in the grass, but it's not much of that in the high desert and it's hot outside. So find a pool, find a beach, have fun and relax. I was able to visit summer school the first day. And even though Ms. Raider said it was chaotic, I I didn't see that. I saw people move in, I saw kids excited. We were able to visit some classes. Actually, we went to all the schools and we had a fantastic time. And I saw the organization, there was some hiccups along the way, but you know, that goes with everything that you do. And I know that you guys straightened it out and I plan to visit again before summer school is over. So I'm just excited that we were able to implement that again this year and it's a success. I know it is. I was able to look at some of the material, the curriculum in the classrooms. And our children was just so happy. And thank you to our, to our C N S staff. You know, working in the summer is hard and I know that you are delivering meals and working to prepare, prepare lunch, breakfast, lunch for our students. And I just wanna say thank you because like sometime that's the only meal our kids get. And I just wanna say thank you to everyone in our district, our superintendent, our cabinet, our staff, our I we can't do without administrative assistance back there and one here, Mrs. Leve and our I T department. Oh, my goodness, we would not be where we are today if it wasn't for you and our security staff here. Thank you. So everyone have a wonderful summer and enjoy. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Benz?
Okay, so I did get get to go. I I appreciate the diverse versity of our dis- district. I went went to El- Elmer Mirage's pro- pro- promote motion. And they had two, they combined their kin- kinder and the eighth grade. Because there there were eight kin- kindergarten gardeners pro- pro- promote molding and four fourteen, eight eighth grade graders. And to see the fam- families there, they're so, so, so proud. And the staff, they real really, it it's like a fam- family there, you know, Ms. Ms. Cr- Christina, she got she got a ton, ton of love from from the kids and it just shows how much the staff is, how important they they are to the kids. And then I got I got to go to Melv- Melva Dave Davis where they had two hun- hundred and sev- seventy promote molding eight eighth grade graders. And we shook all their hands for the ones who were there. There was a lot of handshake shaken. And again, to see all the fam- families there so so celebrate breeding their eighth grade graders. When I was in eighth grade, I got a a pop popsicle and a cer- certif- tifficade and they said, go, you know, so to 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 see the parent parents make a big, big de- deal about their their kids. It's it's heart warm warming and I just wish them all the best in high, high school. And the some some summer school, the kids, most of the kids look like they were hap- happy to be be there. They came all excited, talk talking with with the kids in their their grade. And I I'm real really glad we we ha- have some summer school. I also real really quick, I got got to go to Vict- Victoria, Victoria McGath, Gathens pro- pro- promote motion. And they always, they put on a show. It's like Broadway. They dec- decorate it and it's so, it's like, wow, it's just Mrs. Sand- Sandoval really, I think she she heads it, you know, and it's just I love to go because I lo- love to to see what what's the theme this this year. So you know, they they real really do a great, great thing. And I also got got to go, go to Brad- Braddix. And again, so proud of the kids, but what's more important is the kids were proud of them themselves. And you know, I just wish wish them the best in mid, 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 middle school. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, trustee Benz. Trustee Soto, do you have comment?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll make it real brief. I too wanted to congratulate all the graduates in our district. Um, I also want to extend my gratitude and thank trustee Webster and superintendent Mr. Cross for allowing me to attend my first site visit here at the district. I'm very grateful that I was able to tour the district and to learn the different offices that we have here in the district. I also want to thank A D T A and C S A for their activism and advocate advocacy. As a former activis- activist and advocate, I take a lot of pride in in knowing that there is others who feel the same way and fighting for the right education here in our district. I want to thank Ms. Raider from A D T A for her continued engagement in our meetings. It helps me as a trustee be more accountable and to better advocate for students and teachers. I do look forward working with A D T A and C S A as a trustee. Some of the, some of the important issues that have been arising in our communities, one in particular is A I. Um, A I has been we need to emphasize the importance of regulation, regulating A I and how it's affected our students and their ability to learn. And so I just wanted to bring this concern up to the attention to my colleagues and to the superintendent on how we can regulate A I in our schools so that it doesn't interfere with with the quality of education that our students are receiving. Lastly, I want to think, I want to say Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there and I hope you guys have a wonderful summer. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Soto. And I will try to make mine pretty brief. It is a relief to say we concluded our normal school year, a year with trials and tribulations. We have seen the countless collaboration and communication that has helped our district district navigate the issues we have faced. We've had the time to analyze our shortcomings and had the conversations on how to improve. We've seen ups and downs and a complete turnaround. Structurally, many refer to a school district as a business. And in a lot of ways, I agree, we are. We are a multimillion dollar company with many responsibilities. We have employees, benefits, unions and our own bills. We have departments and management and daily operations and many mouths to feed. But most importantly is our product. And unlike other companies, our product is much more valuable, much more fragile. Our product is not something that can be checked away as if it didn't matter. Our product takes many to create, not just one person and years to prepare. Our product doesn't require metal and wood, but love, compassion, leadership and inspiration. We all are here for that product, a product which leaves very little room for failure. Our product requires investment unlike any other company I know. Our product isn't something you just toss away in a few months or write off at the end of your day. In fact, our product is today's future. Our product, to say, are the young minds and hearts, those being our children. And our, as our employees hold the key to the success of our children, I am so excited to say this year, we collectively advanced. We communicated our needs, collaborated our teams and got creative. We saw the massive advancements in salary, support and unity. This year, we have seen also seen growth. We have seen those deserving get promoted to positions they have worked hard to achieve. We have seen those who tried something only to find out they loved it. Okay. We have seen arrangement to utilize our strengths where we need them most. And I look forward to more of this coming in the next school year. I look forward to what we bring to the ne- to the table next year for our students, our district growth. I want to recognize that this year with Mr. Kraus, we have had a healthier culture. For example, I had the pleasure of spending a Friday afternoon walking schools. And one individual made the comment that Mr. Kraus is a human. And I do say I agree. His ability to listen with the intent of understanding versus just responding is essential. All of this collectively is what makes us different from a regular company. We continue to hold the family collective as we are A E S D family. As we navigate the summer, working collaboratively with our teams, it only gives me great excitement to see what we can do this upcoming year. A few additional comments, summer school has seemed to be a very big success within my household, kicking this week off with our very own trip to Forever Wild. So glad to see our students out doing not so everyday things and having some not so everyday experiences. Thank you to our summer school staff for staying with us for an another month and getting creative with all of our students. And thank you to those supporting the schools while the kids get to enjoy A E S D's enrichment camp. I also want to extend my gratitude to all of our fathers and father figures out there and wish you all a wonderful Sunday. Thank you and I hope all have a good night. All right, trustees, moving on to eighteen point oh one, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So do I motion that we adjourn.
Benz, I sec- second. Ms. Leve, may I get?
No, we have to have discussion.
Oh, we cannot have discussion.
Did you wanna talk about it?
I'm so sorry, fathers, that I missed wishing you a happy Father's Day. I I, you know, it just slipped my mind, but you know, have a wonderful, wonderful day. Um, I know you that you have a wonderful year, that you're never off duty and I'm happy for that. So Happy Father's Day to all the fathers and the fathers of all children.
Ms. Leve, can I get a vote?
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Time is ten twenty-four, meeting is adjourned. Oh, and motion passes four zero.